I want to call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order along with the Lawndale Cable Usage Corporation. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give us the roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Osborne.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Mayor Pollan Miles.
Here.
Okay, now we're going to have our ceremonial portion. We're going to have our flag salute is going to be led by Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Reed and we're going to ask Pastor Max Ewell to give us a word of inspiration from the Restoration Life Christian Church.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, please remove your hats, place your right hand over your heart, repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful city of Lawndale. Father, I pray for our leaders, all of our council members and our mayors. I pray for wisdom, empathy, compassion, and discernment for every decision made over this city that is for the consideration of all the people who dwell here. Father, we thank you for this beautiful opportunity and all that you provide for us. Let us have a blessed day and a great week. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Ewell. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation, a Girl Scouts Gold Award. It is not every day we get the honor of recognizing one of Lawndale's own Girl Scouts Gold Awards recipients. She's joining us today and we will honor her today. Kayleen Mahia, where are you? Where are you? There you go. Caitlin, yeah Caitlin. Sorry about that. So Caitlin, I'm going to read, I'm going to read a little bit of description because, you know, this is a lot of hard work. First of all, let me give you a little background on this. Everyone is probably pretty familiar with the Eagles Award from the Boy Scouts. So if you're familiar with the Eagles Award from the Boy Scouts, you know how hard it is in which to obtain that ranking. Well, this is an equivalent for the Girl Scouts. And so it takes a lot of hard work and dedication for the Girl Scouts to receive this prestigious award. And so I wanted to make that recognition before we go forth. So let's, let's, let me read this real quick. The Girl Scouts Gold Award represents the highest achievement in Girl Scouts. It's only open to girls in high school. The Girl Scout Awards is the most prestigious and difficult award to earn in Girl Scouts. The Girl Scouts recipients are challenged with changing the worlds or at least changing their corner of the world. Now, our very own recipients tonight, Caitlin, has been a Girl Scout since, yes, since kindergarten and has called Lawndale her home since birth. She attended Smith Elementary School, Jane Adams Middle School, and has participated in many, in various sports events as well as many volunteer opportunities here in the city of Lawndale. She has also served as a youth advisory committee member. She's passionate with music and for music and she's played several instruments and she also sings. This is very fitting because she's earned her Gold Star Award by using her music talents and skills. She brought a music program to the senior citizens at the Lawndale Hawthorne Community Center and she used the funds that she's earned through the sales of Girl Scout cookies, nuts, and magazines to purchase six guitars, six keyboards, and a variety of music equipment that she donated to the Lawndale Community Center. Now, she conducted several weeks of music lessons for the seniors and it concluded with recitals before the seniors. And the seniors are able to continue to use the instruments that was donated, donated by checking them out at the community center so they can continue to progress in their music lessons. The seniors can also have additional lessons via her YouTube channel. You got to give us your handle so we'll make sure the people know you. I don't have the handle here, but people can go to your YouTube channel and all the seniors can continue to get their, their lessons. She definitely represents much of what Lawndale is about and what makes Lawndale such a great city to live in. And we are proud to recognize her accomplishment and her achievement in this very prestigious award and it's the Girl Scouts Gold Award. And we're going to make this presentation on behalf of all the members of the city council, our staff, and all the 33,000 members of our city here. Please join us.
I promised Caitlin that we wouldn't embarrass her too awfully much, but a little thing to add on to the tail end of this. You know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, either way, it's the top five percent and sometimes less than five percent that manage to make these ranks. So this is a very big achievement for her.
And Caitlin, we have some very special visitors who came with you tonight. Would you like to introduce?
I have my mom, I have my servicing leader, Ms. Helen, I have my brother, my dad is taking videos and pictures, and then my grandma and my aunt.
Welcome. Welcome. Well, we want to, okay.
So, well, they're in Hawthorne.
So we want to give you this little plaque, just something to hang up on your wall to remember that we are behind you. We know you're, you're on your way to college. And what do you study?
Music technology and production.
Music technology and production. And we know you would do big things in the entertainment industry, not just entertainment, but just in your life in general. We just want to give you a small token of our congratulations to hang on your wall. Make sure you put this on your dorm wall, you know, so everyone can see. From the city of Lawndale, we really appreciate you. And it has your name on it and it recognizes you, of course, for, to acknowledge your achievement for the highest recognition in Girl Scouting, the Girl Scout Eagle Award, Independent Girl Scout Troop 95522. Girl Scouts are a great lost and, and it's signed by the city council. Congratulations. And did we mention that Caitlin served on the youth advisory committee? Of course we did. I just said that to say that, for those who like to serve on the committee, we have a lot of fine, outstanding young people that serve on that committee that does wonderful things. And she's just a demonstration of the good things that's coming out of Lawndale and the future looks very bright in the city of Lawndale with the, with the leadership that we are developing here in the city of Lawndale of our youth. So with that, we're going to move our agenda and we're going to ask our captain to give a public safety report. Captain Turgay.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'll be providing you with the public safety report for March 19th through April 2nd. On March 17th, two victims were physically assaulted by their neighbors, two males, over a parking dispute. On Thursday, March 29th, Detective Vidrio served a search warrant at the suspect's house. She arrested the two involved suspects and recovered a firearm. Last night around 2:00 a.m., sheriff's deputies assisted Hawthorne PD in detaining a mentally ill person who was behaving violently. The incident took place on Hawthorne Boulevard in Rosecrans Avenue in the city of Hawthorne. A mentally ill person was threatening to kill people passing him on the sidewalk. Many witnesses called 911, which were routed to both Hawthorne PD and to the sheriff's department. When sheriff's deputies arrived, the suspect was starting to board a passenger bus. Fearing for the safety of the other passengers, our deputies acted quickly and pulled the mentally ill person from the stairwell of the bus. Once outside, the deputies took him to the ground and handcuffed him. Hawthorne PD is currently investigating that case. I'd like to do a statistical overview of our crimes for the city. This is year-to-date stats. Our homicides are down 100%, rapes are down 50%, aggravated assaults are down 50%, robberies are down 58.33%, burglaries are down 16.67%, larceny thefts are down 52.31%, grand thefts autos are down 34.21%. Overall, the city has seen a reduction of 43.97% in part one violent crimes, I'm sorry, part one crimes, which include violent crimes, which is outstanding and I attribute that to all of the hard work that all of you are doing along with the citizens here in Lawndale. Coffee with the Cop. Please join us for a cup of coffee on April 18th. We will be hosting a Coffee with the Cop event at Loaded Cafe, which is located at 15126 Hawthorne Boulevard, Unit B. The event will be held from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you haven't, if you have not visited Loaded Cafe, they have plenty, they have a variety of menu options, good food, and plenty of parking, and we hope to see you there. In addition, South LA Station is joining with Southwest College and we are hosting a multi-job hiring event. That's scheduled for Saturday, April 14th, Southwest College, which is located at 1600 West Imperial Highway. Start time is 7:00 a.m. for deputy sheriff trainees, custody assistants, and security officers. And for all of those positions, you need to go online prior to the, the hiring event a week before and fill out your application. You're going to be taking the written test and the physical agility test that same day. So we're trying to do a hiring push and we're down about close to 1,000 deputies. So if you know anyone, please put, spread the word. And I am open to any questions if you have any for me.
Okay, thank you for their report. Are there any questions of the captain's report?
None, just thank you for the good updates.
Yeah, I just want to commend the department on the great statistics we just heard because unlike those Lawndale stats, other places in the state are seeing the reverse. So I want to commend you and the deputies that do a good job. One thing I did want to bring to attention, I'm sure the lieutenant already is aware of, but I've noticed personally an increase in a lot of gang graffiti, particularly this past weekend. Prairie and 160th or thereabouts, Serenio Gang was tagging up a stretch there across from Wander Park. So I know they've been keeping an eye on things because there's been other problems involved with these two rival gangs, but that was a pretty ugly sight Saturday morning. There was a huge amount of graffiti there, but staff came out quick and got it taken care of. So just an FYI.
Good. Thank you for the information. We've been trying to monitor that a lot closely. I do have our Operation Safe Streets Bureau, we have a gang detective assigned to the city of Lawndale as well as Detective Vidrio, who's been doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep. So thank you. The stats are definitely good to put out. So much appreciated with that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, and thank you for those staffs, Captain. And also, just riding on that, I just had a conversation with, with the resident Saturday and she reported that she's very pleased with the sheriff department and that the deputies, the response times have increased. And she's wanted me to carry that, that message that she's very happy. Apparently in some time past, there's been some issues or what have you, but she didn't feel the need to even go into the issues because she felt that things were much better, much improved now. And she reported that just this Saturday. So congratulations once again to you and your, your staff and all the deputies for your hard work and particularly for these stats and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our oral communication. Oral communication is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body, being either the Lawndale City Council or the Lawndale Cable Usage Corporation, on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to either bodies, we ask that you would line up by the flag. When it's your turn to speak, if you would just come to the podium, if you would start with your, your name. At about two minutes, the amber light will come on. That is your signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker.
Captain, Mayor, City Council, my name is Jose Farron. I'm the manager at Chair Lawndale Library. Just wanted to give you a quick update of all the activities that we have going on at the library. This Thursday at 4 o'clock, we have our Classics, Classics Book Club. We'll be discussing The Strangers, the short books. You still have time to read it and come on by. On Saturday, April 7th, we have our annual countywide book sale. Every county library takes this opportunity to have a book sale to raise some funds, to get some programming. So if you have any good books at home, if you want to drop them by so we could put them up on sale on Saturday, that'd be fantastic. On April 11th, we have our Visual Arts for Kids. It's a great program through theater parks who works with some of the best artists in the city to bring in, artists in the county, to bring in visual arts to, to the libraries and really put the fundamentals of art in our, in our libraries. On April 14th, we have our bi, our monthly bilingual storytime. That'll be at 11:00 a.m. On April, same day, at 2:00 p.m., we have our Spanish Citizenship 101 class. It's a two-hour session where parents, people could come in and find out the steps that are needed to become a U.S. citizen. It's about a one-hour presentation and there'll be about 45 minutes for question and answers. This will be our Spanish edition of this, of this class. Two months ago, we did have an English edition. We, we had a decent turnout. And commenting with, with the sheriffs, we really want to thank the sheriffs. About two weeks ago, we had, we feared for the safety of one of the childrens who come to the library. And so we called the sheriffs and they quickly responded and did a safety check on the child. So really, really, they were there within five minutes. I was really grateful for how quickly they responded and the action they took. So I really want to again thank the sheriffs for the actions that they took. And yeah, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Viola Riley. I live at 15021 Gravilla Avenue. And I would like to file a complaint against a code enforcement officer named Gregory Williams. On March 18th, 2018, at my rental, which is 15019 Gravilla Avenue, there was a mattress that was left in the alley. I was worried that it would get hit or someone would start a fire. So my son put it up against my fence till I could arrange a pickup. I called Republic Service. I made four scheduled pickups with confirmation numbers and still no one picked it up. I started calling from 31918. It was still there on 329. I called to see why they were not hauling it away and was told that either the driver didn't see it or couldn't come on property. So could I put it back in the alley? My son put it back in the alley. Just a few hours later, 329, this is, at 110, there was a knock on my door. I was on the phone. I went to the door and the person asked me if I was the homeowner. I said yes. That was all I got to say. This city worker just started yelling at me that I was in violation and he had a picture of the mattress on my property. I can't just throw it in the alley, is what he said. I told my friend that I would call her back. She was listening this whole time. She's here tonight and she'll vouch for that conversation and also what she heard. He said he was going to cite me. I kept trying to explain and he was not even giving me a chance. The more I tried to tell my side, the more mad he got. He got out of control. He said he was going to give me a citation. I tried to tell him that I couldn't move it on my own. I have a shoulder injury and numerous medical issues. He could care less, not even an offer to help me, just that he was going to write me up. Of course, I ran to try to move the mattress on my property, could only drag, which was hard for me to even do that. I had been, I have been hurting ever since. I'm a 63-year-old Lawndale resident that is disabled. I felt threatened and harassed, could not believe how bad I was treated. I think being a woman, he felt he could intimidate me. He gave me a courtesy citation notice and then he gave me his business card. I didn't even really know who he was until he gave me the card. I had met him before on previous accounts, but didn't, okay, thank you. Oh, I can finish? Okay. So I, I just felt threatened and couldn't believe how bad. And, and, and the courtesy notice he gave me even after I did move the mattress and he wanted to come back and re-inspect. I called Dan Reed and asked him if he could check into this for me because I was so distraught, which he did. And he said that Steve Mandoki would call me, which I have yet to receive that phone call. But I did talk to Diane Parsley and told her everything and she wrote it down. And I just basically didn't want him coming back to my property because he was just so irate. And you know, he was out there first thing on the 30th on my property again, saying that he was re-inspecting. And he knew that I had moved the mattress, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say the name of the YouTube channel is Lawndale City Music and the username is Lawndale Senior Music, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's, that's your YouTube handle. Okay, thank you.
Pam London, 171st. Again, congratulations to our Girl Scout and congratulations to her parents for raising such a great kid. Anyway, I spoke about fireworks and fireworks booths a couple, couple meetings ago. The reason that I believe our Parks and Rec has not had a booth is not about a fireworks company. It's about a location because they lost access to the property at Hawthorne and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And I believe they could have been put at the lumber, well, excuse me, building supply company had you guys not granted a reprieve or whatever for the rotary. And reminding you, our Parks and Rec Department gives 100% to the city, unlike the other organizations. Anyway, second time I've been on my way to the city council and just about had an accident because stupid people don't know how to drive. Our intersections that cross over Hawthorne Boulevard, as we know, are an issue for a lot of people. They don't quite get it that you, if you want to make a left-hand turn, so be it, but you cross all the way over in your lane. You don't go to the other side and then flip off the person who's in your way because, oh, that's right, they're driving the way the road says drive. So I don't know if there are signs, if there are arrows that can be put on the asphalt. I don't know what can be done, but somebody needs to do something about the stupid people that can't follow the rules of the road. That's a real problem. And parking, of course, unfortunately, it's really sad to hear that somebody else has had such a major issue with parking. And I told you for months and months how I lived under threat from code enforcement about the threat of coming to my home and removing my animals. And that was a big threat. And that was a big threat that I still don't appreciate. There was never an apology, never anything, even though my animals were vaccinated. I met all state requirements, all medical requirements. I just refused to vaccinate early because I did not want to put my animals at risk, which, by the way, all those things that I said before, they're all on record medically. It's all in the veterinary medical records as to the risk of over-vaccinating your animals. as to the risk of over-vaccinating your animals. So I'm grateful that the City Council did, in fact, change that licensing requirement and do away with that June garbage. And I hope that, that it'll never come back in this city. I hope that this city will never stand by and allow a department to mandate a time that you vaccinate when that's not the way it should be done. You don't do it for your children, and you shouldn't have to do it for your animals either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randall Abram, Lawndale resident. At the last meeting, the council made it very clear that out of all the profits made by the various organizations on fireworks sales, only half of that is required to benefit the city of Lawndale in any fashion. Why only half? Why doesn't Lawndale mandate, as the city of Compton does, that all of the fireworks proceeds benefit the city? Obviously, the real winner in all of this is not the community, but the fireworks manufacturers, who walked away with almost two-hundred-and-seventy thousand in sales last year. Deducting their expenses, the eight nonprofits were left with ninety-eight thousand, or an average of twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty each. Out of that ninety-eight thousand total, sixty-eight thousand was dispersed to the city, with thirty-three thousand spent by the organizations as they saw fit. The only booth in Lawndale that would benefit the city as an entirety would be that of the Parks and Recreation Department. Unfortunately, they were not able to, to secure a desirable location last year, and I do not know if it is looking promising this year. The City Council chose to overturn the decision of the city to deny the Rotary Club a booth for its failure once again to comply with the rules. This organization not had only the most profitable location last year, generating almost twenty-four thousand in profits, but shared less than twelve thousand to benefit Lawndale. It is unfortunate that the Parks and Recreation Department is unable to secu- to secure this location as would benefit Lawndale only. I would commend the city of Gardena not only for its recent ban on safe and sane fireworks, but previously requiring an upfront regulatory fee from the fireworks manufacturers. This could be as high as two-twenty thousand, depending on the number of fireworks booths. This fee was an offset for police and other city costs due to allowing safe and sane fireworks. Is there any reason the city of Lawndale should not require a fee from the fireworks manufacturers that could provide funding for additional law enforcement? We hear every year how fireworks sales benefit the youth of Lawndale. However, when you look at the numbers, the fireworks companies making the big money in Lawndale. After paying off the manufacturers for the fireworks and other costs, in two thousand seventeen, the various booths only ended up with about one-third of the profits, and only half of that goes to Lawndale. In two thousand seventeen, only twenty-five percent of the two-hundred-and-seventy thousand went towards benefiting Lawndale. If residents have to go through all the health and safety hazards associated with fireworks, should all the profits benefit the city? Why should the fireworks manufacturers pay a regulatory fee towards a community in which they reap such great profits and create such havoc? Look at the time spent by city staff that oversee this program, the complaints by the community, and the extra patrols by the Sheriff's Department. And all the fireworks companies have to do is sit back and count the profits. The Sheriff's Department did a great job in my neighborhood last year controlling the amount of illegal fireworks. Certainly, additional funding paid by the fireworks companies and not the residents would help throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're going to bring up to the diocese for some comments from the, the council members. If there are any, let's start with Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Uh, just two things. Jose, thanks for that day for library information. I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. I need Mike Estes at the podium for a minute. Could you? It was brought up that, uh, Parks and Rec Social Services funds stay in the city of Lawndale. How much of that a year are they allowed to spend? And how much is in their savings right now?
Uh, their savings overall, over the years?
Oh, to date.
To date, over, over all the years?
Yeah.
Yeah, approximately a hundred thousand dollars.
How much are they allowed to spend a year?
There, there's no real limit?
I thought there was like twenty percent they can spend.
No, no, but they're very, they spend it very judiciously.
Okay, but I, I was misled, because I thought...
That was a, a proposal that a prior commission made years and years ago that never really, uh, you know, made it to an ordinance.
So they're allowed to spend, if they want to spend the whole eighty thousand dollars this year, they can?
I, I think they could, yes.
Okay. And that's my question. I'll pass it on to my colleague, Clay Wright.
Councilwoman Swartz.
Thank you to everyone that spoke, and thank you to everyone in attendance. I just had one, uh, question. If we could have maybe a brief update. I'm not sure how recent this is with Ms. Riley's, um, situation.
I believe it was Thursday.
Okay.
And Ms. Riley came into City Hall, did speak with Diana, she said, and Diana did give you a complaint form, I believe, to fill out. She had it, she had started to fill it out, and she gave me a council complaint form. But I'll make sure that's given to you. It should have been given to you already, so you can fill it out. Um, Mr. Williams' supervisor's out of the office. I don't have anyone to talk to about the behavior over his supervisor, but, uh, I know Diana was handling it, so, um, that is a proper course, is to fill out the form. It is a personnel matter that you're raising, and we've dealt with confidentially.
Thank you. That's all I have. I'll pass it along.
Okay, Councilmember Ozawa.
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. We can't take any of the comments from, from the audience, but we will follow up with you, though.
Well, you asked a question I was going to ask, and, um, so you're going to speak to Ms. Riley? Okay, all right. And if she has questions, she can speak with you directly as well?
I'll be out the next couple of days, but Diane will be here and so will Raylet.
When, when you return, she could still meet with you. Right, okay. Um, and thank you, Jose, for the book sale. You know, I got a question, uh, being just nod, I guess. Somebody said the library wasn't accepting book or magazine donations any longer, but you are? You're saying yes? Okay, I was told in error then, because I was told you're not taking that material anymore. And, uh, I was thinking, how are you having the book sales if you're not getting more books? But that's good to hear. And then, um, the question also, going back to, uh, the complainant, um, there was the issue with Republic. Steve, you think we might check on Republic too, just to find out what took so long on the pickup delay or whatnot? Because there's been the personnel shift, you know, we don't have Sam any longer. And the public could contact him direct, so I wonder if there's been some disconnect. So, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Reed.
All righty. Thank you, everybody, for speaking. I appreciate that. Um, and Jose, I don't know. I've asked the wife. She just never lets go of the books, but I'll ask her again. Um, so, uh, thank you for the update on those, uh, projects coming up. Um, and Ms. Riley, yes, we did speak, and I understood that, you know, this is the update that we got tonight, is the supervisor hasn't been in. Steve or Raylet will get with you for sure, within the next few days, to finish that. But for sure, Diane will follow up with you tomorrow and get that form to you, because we thought that was done.
And as the C man just said, it's a confidential personnel matter, so council really shouldn't be involved further.
Well, right. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and so we did get Caitlin Senior Music, Lawndale Senior Music, for YouTube, for those that are looking to get additional, uh, training out there from her music. That'll be good stuff, so. Uh, do want to throw one thing over to Ken real quick for clarification on the fireworks and the payouts. Youth category for an entity pay, has to have X back to the youth, and then X to community. And then community has to put X back. So there's two different categories. Can you just, for the public's justification, put out the specific?
Yes. Regardless if it's a, uh, community-based or youth-based organization, they still need to, uh, pay out the following. The first twenty-five percent, uh, must be spent on youth. The next twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent can be spent on either youth or, uh, on community-based, uh, expenses. So fifty percent is guaranteed, basically, to come back to the community.
And that's guaranteed, required, has to be done, is reported and audited accordingly?
Absolutely. And there are two different reports we require during the year. Uh, part A, we require them to show all the revenue and all their expenditures. And then part B, a little later in the year, we require them to show where the money went, which organizations the money went to, Girl Scouts or what have you.
And, and that's a minimum fifty. It's not to say that they're not giving more.
That's a good point.
That is the minimum requirement. They may be putting it all together. Mm-hmm, absolutely. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, let, let's stay on that for, for a second, make sure that, that I'm clear. Um, because Mr. Randall, he mentioned a hundred percent, um, should go back to Lawndale in some fashion or another. I understand that, that breakdown, but did we get to a hundred percent staying in, um, Lawndale? I know there's the, the twenty-five percent for, for youth.
Okay, fifty percent, we know, is comes back to the community or to the youth. The other fifty percent, they're entitled to, to use as they need. All these groups are nonprofit anyways, so basically the money staying in their organization is basically spent on charitable, uh, events anyways.
So, okay, so that fifty percent is coming back to the community, and the other fifty is coming back to the, to the youth. That would, in theory, be a hundred...
The first twenty-five percent must come back to the youth. The next twenty-five percent can either go to the youth or to, uh, charitable something in Lawndale. Now, there's a remaining fifty percent they can use at their own discretion, which a lot of times it, it does go towards youth, et cetera.
I'll give you, for example, I'll give you, for example, the Kiwanis sponsor Youth and Government Day every year. They had a fireworks booth. They sponsor a Thanksgiving dinner for the seniors. So it does come back to the, the city. And some of the money's kept for operating budgets, but most of the money's always turned back to the city. Like I said, the Kiwanis do Youth and Government Day, they do Thanksgiving lunch, so it comes back to the city.
And these are all nonprofits, and we verify their five oh one C three status. So if they spend it something, on something else, within their organization, it's generally charitable anyways.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And staying on that, um, that line of thought, uh, he also brought up, uh, Mr. Randall, about manufacturers pay a fee in certain cities? Have we ever heard of such a thing? I've, I've never heard of that before.
Manufacturers pay a fee?
Pay, it seems to suggest that in the city, I don't think it was, I don't know if it was Gardena or whatever. Gardena, the manufacturers themselves also participate by paying some type of fee.
Are you talking about the fireworks suppliers?
Yeah, the fireworks suppliers are...
Okay, I need to check into that. Yeah, I'm not, I don't know if I had.
Let's, let's look into that to see what, what that's about. I would be interested to know how that works out.
Okay, um, I too want to thank, uh, Ms. Riley for bringing this, um, even though it's a personnel, um, issue onto our attention. Um, it's always good for us to know at least, um, how our, um, employees are communicating with our constituents, with, with the community. So although it is a personnel matter, I do appreciate you bringing it, uh, to our attention, and we will, uh, respond accordingly, uh, me and, meaning that the Personnel, um, Department will respond, um, accordingly. So, but thank you for bringing this to our attention. And you're absolutely right. With, um, Republic, there may be a disconnect, because they have a new representative, and maybe people don't have her direct number, um, like they used to have Sam's, but we'll make sure that, that that doesn't happen again. And I think that's all I wanted to add. Um, yeah, that's all I wanted to add. But I want to thank everyone else for coming out and for, for speaking as well. So with that, we will move our agenda. We are now on our consent calendar. Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar? Which includes one item from the Lawndale Cable Uses Corporation.
Seeing no horses, seeing no looks to pull, I will make a motion to accept.
So there's been a motion?
I'll second it.
By, um, Daniel Reed, that we, uh, approved the consent calendar, and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any debate on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none with it. Yes, ma'am, would you please read that for us?
Uh, ordinance, it's item number two. It's ordinance number one-one-four-five-dash-one-eight, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lawndale, California, amending chapter seventeen point forty-eight residential zones of the Lawndale Municipal Code to make certain clarifying changes to the city's regulations regarding accessory dwelling units and a finding of exemption from CEQA. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Will the council please vote on the consent calendar?
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on our agenda is going to be on the administration, item number eight, um, concerning Hawthorne Boulevard bike lanes.
Let's give the staff report.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, this next item, um, following, uh, City Council's direction, uh, staff has, uh, researched and worked with Metro to find an alternative used to repurpose the call for project monies that were used to fund, uh, uh, Class Two bike lanes on Hawthorne Boulevard. Uh, both, um, Metro and staff, uh, agree that Hawthorne Boulevard was not a, a, a good candidate for those Class Two bike lanes. And, and with that, um, in your report, staff is recommending an, an alternative project, which, if approved, would be the city's first bike facilities, um, in the city. Uh, Metro is very supportive of the project, so much so that, uh, they are willing to commit grant writing assistance to help the city apply for active transportation, uh, grant funds, which is a highly coveted program or, or grant opportunity for, for many cities in the state. Uh, the project would consist of a complete streets, um, approach or redo of One Forty-seventh Street, which, um, the improvements could consist of road diet, uh, many roundabouts, um, pedestrian amenities, as well as bicycle facilities. Uh, the project also proposes a bike facilities down Freeman Avenue that would connect One Forty-seventh Street, uh, to One Sixty-sixth, and then bike facilities on One Sixty-sixth that would extend from Prairie down to Formona Avenue. The proposed project is consistent with the adopted, um, complete streets policy. Uh, it's also consistent with the, uh, bike routes that are recommended in the concurrent Safe Route to School Plan. And it's also consistent with the goals identified in the, um, the state's, uh, active transportation program, which are listed here as to increase the proportion of trips, uh, uh, done by walking, biking, uh, to increase safety and mobility for non-motorized users, uh, reduce greenhouse gases, and, and enhance public health. Staff has prepared a, is, an estimate for the project at four-point-three million dollars, which the city could leverage its call for project monies as, as matching funds. Uh, in your, in your report, there's, uh, several exhibits. One of them is an exhibit, um, identified as Exhibit B, that, um, depicts what a, um, a complete streets approach would, would be or look like in a, in a residential setting. This is the, the roundabout that would, would take place or be in lieu of the, uh, s- series of, uh, stop sign, uh, stop sign controlled intersections, as well as pedestrian amenities, and what the, uh, shared bike, uh, lane markings would look like. And the report is also the, uh, uh, bike routes identified in the Safe Route to School, uh, Plan. Um, those, those rounds would, would create instant connectivity to five, at least five schools. Um, at this point, staff believes it's, it's researched all available options or alternatives, and is, um, at this point, seeking City Council's direction or, and or approval of the alternative scope, or to, or to simply oblige, deobligate the funds. And that would conclude my report, unless there's questions for staff.
I do. Okay, are there any questions on staff? Let's start with Councilmember Ozawa.
Thank you, Frank. That's a very good, uh, comprehensive report, but I do have some concerns and questions. Um, let, let it be said for me that I've not been a big fan of road diets, having witnessed firsthand what happened down in the Platte Delray district. Now, given this is a smaller area, less travel, however, my concern, one, would be that if that was implemented on One Forty-seventh, uh, that it would likely increase the, the feeder traffic onto the adjacent One Forty-ninth. So you're going to have a lot more traffic increase going through the residential area, people just trying to avoid the, uh, loss of a lane there on One Forty-seventh. Um, so is there a way to... Excuse me, uh, could, somebody go and tell that there's a lot of noise coming outside the building?
It's just some children playing.
Something's making a noise out there. Anyway, Frank, uh, is there a way to incorporate, now, roundabouts, I'm not so, uh, opposed to, having driven across England. We're actually kind of a time saver, although a lot of people are not used to them. But is there, can you have a piecemeal, where you keep one and eliminate, or is it all or nothing? Do you know that?
Well, number one, we would, we would certainly develop a, a traffic study to, to, to analyze if feasibility. What is the roadway capable of, you know, handling, or what are the minimum requirements as, as far as the capacity is concerned? Uh, number two, we, we know that, um, while there's two lanes in each direction, uh, a road diet would then convert that roadway into one lane in each direction. Uh, there's several configurations that, that are available. Uh, we could have one lane in each direction with a, with a turn median in the middle. Um, there's an extreme case where we can eliminate, uh, that turn median, and with the roundabouts, that essentially helps to alleviate some potential congestion. congestion, it allows traffic to, to flow through continuously, and hopefully avert some of that, that cut through traffic that might want to then use one-forty-ninth.
That's a possibility.
You know, I mean, the first step would be to look at the, the feasibility.
Well, I, again, though, do you know, is it all or nothing?
No, it's, it's not all or nothing. We, we can pick and choose which ones are more, perhaps more strategic, um, alternate. Uh, at, at this point, it's, it's really wide open.
Well, then that leads to my next question. Um, we all pretty much know that Metro has the plans for either Hawthorne or Green Belt, whatever. Is there any possibility, of course, this is only just one segment, it's not a complete, like a rectangular or square pattern that they're trying to institute with the bike plan, but is there a way to incorporate maybe a plan? Because I heard that initially, when they were going to develop, uh, on the Green Belt, a long time ago, they were talking about undergrounding, putting a bike path on top of it. Of course, now they're backpedaling Metro is on this undergrounding and perhaps a trench. Uh, is there a way to still secure some grant funding for a bike path paid through this grant for that portion on the Green Belt, or is that too small an area and just not part of this at all?
Um, we, we didn't get, we didn't get that far. What we were really focusing on was a, a bike path or a network that would mimic, um, the function of, of the bike lanes on Hawthorne Boulevard, may, mostly just a north-south, uh, connectivity. If you, if you look at the exhibit of what, what this plan is proposing, is it's a bike network, it really is focusing right now on the easterly half of the city. Um, the idea is to complete this loop through the city. Um, of course, there's some traffic issues that still need to be further vetted on, on the westerly half.
I remember that from the initial proposal, of course, that didn't mention anything on road diets, that initial plan that the council was looking at, so this is sort of a new thing in the game. Lastly, uh, if, if the council did decide to just scrap it all together and not implement it at this time, uh, the forty-six, uh, seven-oh-two, that just goes back, or it's not expended, so it's just back in general fund? It's just like it never went out as an expense. Those matching funds?
Yes, they basically go back into the pot. They, they haven't been expended, um, other than the hundred-and-eighty-six, that would, a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, that's the actual, uh, call for project fund to mount.
Okay. All right, thank you for the information. I'll yield to my colleagues.
Just a quick question, um, in your report, it says that, um, some of the benefits is a possible, um, possibly additional parking. How would this con- contribute to, um, possible additional parking?
Well, um, a complete streets approach, uh, I may, maybe a more progressive, um, cross-section, if, if you will, would be one lane in each direction, parallel parking on, on one side of the street, either the northerly or the southerly half, and then there's a potential for, um, reverse angle parking. So you would be fitting more cars in diagonal spaces, uh, than the par- existing parallel parking layout, um, similar to what's the, the, the diagonal parking between Beeren and Hawthorne Boulevard. But, but it would include bike lanes, and the idea behind reverse angle parking would be that as you back in, you park, and when you're exiting, you can see the bicyclists coming in front of you. The, there's a safety element to backing in your car, so you, when you exit your vehicle, you're, you're walking towards a sidewalk, opening trunk, um, unloading your car, uh, onto the sidewalk. So that was, uh, one of the ideas of being able to possibly, uh, generate some more, some more public parking.
Hmm, okay. So now, now, when do we have to act on this? Is this today or nothing, or?
Well, the, uh, well, the opportunity, um, the opportunity for eight, for the active transportation grant is, is happening now. Uh, Metro is poised to provide that assistance, and so with that, um, that's why the, the recommendation to, uh, essentially commit to the project, uh, since Metro is providing those, those resources.
But we don't have like a hard date that we have to give Metro, um, a, a decision?
Essentially, it's now. Uh, means they're, they're consultants ready to assist the city, and if, and if the city elects not to, well then, we just forego those, those grant writing, uh, that grant writing assistance.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
Is there any additional questions?
Well, I like the idea of, of kind of seeing the green line, and then kind of seeing if that green space can be turned into anything, if we could allocate this, these funds towards that. Um, but, um, it seems like it, we started off with a smaller scale on Freeman, and it kind of grew a little bigger. I'd kind of like to see a little more, uh, drawings and a little more intense, uh, visuals for that. Kind of changed a lot, went from Hawthorne to Freeman, now it's kind of, uh, I just wonder if we have a little more time where we can see a little more on the project.
As, as far as sketches and, uh, we just didn't get that, we didn't get that far, but that will certainly be part of the grant writing assistance, that's something that would be, uh, generated as part of these, these exhibits, that generates something a little bit higher quality and, um, kind of model what that would look like. Back to the, uh, I guess the comments or the questions regarding, um, a bike path on, on the Green Belt area, I almost feel that that would be part of the, the whole Green Belt discussion and as part of the mitigation measures.
Yeah.
But that might be separate from this process?
I think so.
Okay. Well, yeah, that, they, Metro actually put that on the table years ago as a possibility, so I just hearken back to that as a way to tie it into this, because in spirit, I support, you know, establishment of a bike lane, because I, where I've seen it in place, it's nothing more than just spray paint markings in the streets saying, "This is the path." It's not taking away, I do not support the road diet, I do not support taking away car lanes, because I've seen that firsthand, what a problem that was in, in the North Beach community. But if it's just simply markings and saying, "Here's our designated route," because people could ride their bikes there today, there's no prohibition on it, all it is is an indicator. So in that spirit, I don't have a problem with it. But, um, I don't know, maybe somebody wants to save the, the matching funds. I, you know, that's a valid point, too, with a lot of other fiscal problems.
We can certainly work around the road diet issue. I mean, this is, this is a, that's just one concept of, of, of a complete streets.
Yeah, well, that's good to hear.
Uh, we can eliminate the, uh, the road diet and go with the other amenities such as, uh, a shared bike lane, some of the pedestrian amenities, because it's an active transportation grant. So we're just, we're, it's not just focused on, on traffic mobility, we're also looking at pedestrian bicycle usage.
Yeah, I, I'm supportive of the spirit, but again, um, still, we're, we're almost putting fifty thousand matching into it for really just marking out a path that already exists, so.
Let's see, uh, Mr. Daniel, have something to say?
Yeah, so no, I mean, I, I support it as, as far as the, the biking and, and marking too, but I don't want to see us taking away lanes. Uh, I don't see how, I don't see how taking away a lane and adding maybe even ten, twenty parking spaces is going to help us in regards to this. And this street's not wide enough, I don't think, to take a parking lane away. Uh, so, you know, definitely to bring it in, great, gain some access to that additional funds as a split biking without taking that road diet portion, I would support that.
Okay, anyone else have anything?
I do, I think we just scrap this whole project and save forty-six thousand dollars.
Could do that.
Yeah, it's just redundant, because you're going to put all this down, Freeman, everything, and they're still going to use Hawthorne Boulevard to go up and down. You might get a few riders on the side streets on Freeman, but what are you going to see, houses? Dirt yards, right? That's where I want to ride my bike and see dirt yards. In my opinion, we should just scrap it.
It occurred to me that if we were to spend that same amount of money, we might as well just paint the roads ourselves and do it for half of that. That's a lot of money for just spray paint markings in a street and maybe a few signs. Doesn't it seem like that's a lot of money just for, uh, taking it aside as just as painting those markings in the street? I've seen LA County do this in other places. That's all they do. There may be a street sign saying, "Here's the path," or they'll paint the outline of a bicycle on the street. That's a lot of money just to do that.
The, the four-point-three?
Well, the total, yeah. Even our portion, I think we could probably do it for less than our portion. That's just my experience in public works.
Well, certainly as we proceed with street improvement projects, we can, um, incorporate that as part of these, the traffic striping and the signage, and, um, it, it's really not that expensive, true, but there is still that, that road rehab, rehabilitation portion that's still unfunded, so.
That's true.
Um, that's why the, the high ticket, um...
Yeah, it's the big picture.
Well, I have to agree with, um, um, Pat Kearney that we, at, at this point, to just to scrap the, the whole ideal and, um, keep our portion of the funding.
Good.
This part.
Were there any speakers on this item?
Are there any speakers on this item? I don't, no, no one indicated.
So to clarify with the Public Works Director, if we scrap this, the, the, basically, the local transportation funds would stay here for another alternative use then?
Y- yes, they would.
Okay.
Okay, so we're still going to use the funds for something else in the, in the future?
Once the green line project is done, maybe there's something we could come up with on that.
Yeah, this isn't the end-all. I'm sure there's other opportunities that might pop up eventually down the road.
Like Metro paying for all of it?
That'd be great.
Yeah, then we could have a totally different discussion.
Right.
We got the measuring money.
Okay, is there, um, what's the pleasure of this body concerning this proposition?
I'm okay with, uh, just letting it go for now.
Is it, uh?
No problem.
De-obligate funds?
Can always come back to it. Let it go.
What do you want to do, Mr. Kearney?
Well, I'm making a motion that we scrap the program to a further date.
I'll second that.
Um, just to clarify, if it's option two under Frank's report about de-obligating the, um, the call for project funds, is part of your motion?
Clarify that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, de-obligate. Okay, so the motion's been, been made by, um, Pat Kearney and seconded by Ms. Osborne. Is there any, uh, discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please?
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, item nine is, uh, janitorial services for the community center, the Hoffman Community Center.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, City Council, this item recommends that, uh, the council approve a First Amendment with ultimate maintenance services that pro- that are providing temporary janitorial services at the community center. Uh, we're recommending that the, um, services be extended through the end of this fiscal year, June thirtieth, as, as the city completes the, the recruitment process for maintenance, one, uh, worker. Um, also, not stated in the report, uh, this would, uh, require the authorization of appropriation of funds, uh, ten thousand one-hundred-and-forty of available salaries to, to fund the extension of these services.
Oh, okay, thank you for that report. You answered the one question that I had. Um, is there any other questions in the staff report?
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion for approval, because it's obvious this is needed.
Okay, so the motion's been made by, um, Councilman Osborne and...
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Daniel Reed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously.
Oh, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, next item on our agenda is item number ten, um, concerning the Southern California Association of Governments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, on May second, third, and fourth, the, uh, Southern California Association of Governments is having, having their general conference and assembly. Uh, we have, while this was not budgeted within the City Council's department, I do have funds within the city manager's account to fund, uh, any attendees that wish to, uh, go. So before you tonight, it's just a request for the council members to designate who would like to go. There's enough funds for all of you to go if you wish. Um, so all I'm looking for is a, a head count that we can then follow up on and make registration plans for you.
Yeah, SCAG provides the accommodations, huh?
For the voting member, they give one night, yeah.
I'd like to go. I haven't gone to this one yet. Um, so if council's okay with it?
No problem. I'm already a member of SCAG, so I go.
Do you have to commit tonight?
Yes, registration's closing, and so our hotels are getting very hard to book, so it would be good, we'd rather to book it now and council later. Otherwise, you may not be in a, a room that's near the conference, you could be miles away.
You went last year?
Or year before.
Okay, put, put me, put me down, but let me confirm in the morning now.
Tomorrow, um, okay.
But you can put me down tonight.
Yes, so I'll put down Councilmember Suarez, Osborne, and Mayor Pullman Miles.
I'm not sure.
I'll let Diane know, and if there's any changes, just let us know. It'd be easier, again, to counsel.
If you want to be the voting delegate, you can, but I go.
And that's the other item, who's the voting delegate?
There's no expense to the city for me.
I earned it, should be voted on.
I'll, I'll vote.
So, Councilmember...
He's the delegate already.
Councilmember Osborne, the voting delegate, the alternate would be?
I'll be the alternate.
One of you.
Okay. Okay, with that direction, I will let Diane know, and we'll make plans. If there's any changes, just let us know.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. City Manager. Okay, the next item is item number eleven, uh, purchase of a computer system for the cable television. I'm sorry, you...
I know you didn't.
Everyone's good?
I am. I, I think Maria had a comment, but I couldn't hear her.
I'm the last one, I thought I needed a motion.
We got direction.
Yeah.
You're good, okay, okay. Next item on our agenda is item eleven, purchase of computer system.
This is a purchase of two, uh, computers for the cable television, uh, division. They are in need of, replace some older equipment. The cost is, I believe, approximately ten thousand, ten thousand three hundred dollars, and we would be utilizing the cable access funds that are meant for this purchase. Currently, there's fourteen thousand dollars in that account, but since it's not allocated in the budget, we need council approval tonight for this, but the funds are available for these two, uh, pieces of equipment.
Yeah, the money's already been set aside, so it's just a purchase from the allocation.
Correct, I need council approval for this.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'm okay. Okay, the motion's been made by Councilmember Osborne and...
I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilmember...
It's quick.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, will the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you.
This is you.
Next item on the agenda is item number twelve. Okay, so this is an item, um, I was asked to put this item on the agenda from the, um, National Prescription Drug Takeback Event. Um, I'm just going to summarize it. Basically, you have it in your, your staff report. Um, this program is designed to, um, to allow communities to take back, um, um, drugs, prescrip- prescription drugs, um, that are no longer, um, um, being used. Instead of going down the drain into our sewer system, where we would have a secured, um, container, disposable container of some sort, where you can, um, put those, um, drugs in those containers, and they will be, um, sent to the appropriate, um, appropriate place. Um, the South Bay Communities, um, a coalition of community, um, organizations such as UDAG, I think there were some young representatives here from UDAG, um, um, earlier, I think they had to leave, um, they asked that we put this on the, on the calendar, um, to consider allowing Lawndale to be, um, one of the, um, the, um, the destination posts to, to, in order to, um, to drop off the un- unwanted, uh, um, um, drugs. And this resolution is supported by the Drug Enforcement Agency, that biannual national prescription drug takeback events in an effort of the South Bay Communities, um, to work to enhance, to enhance drug prevention, um, education awareness activities. And so simply, that, we would just have a container, and people can drop off, whether it's their, their drugs they use for, um, diabetic, um, drugs, or whatever you call it. I mean, I would tell you, I have some, um, drugs left over from when I had surgery years ago, and for some reason, I just really didn't know what to do with them. They just, kind of just sitting there in, in a bag, you know, and, and some people do flush them down the drain, and they go into our, our water sys- water system and end up into the water table, and we don't want that to happen. So that's what this resolution would do, allow us to participate in the program. And it's Resolution Number CC eighteen-zero-four.
Do you want to make the motion to approve the resolution?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Let's, let's, let's see, does any discussion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all right, so I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution Number, um, CC dash... Eighteen-zero-zero-four, dash zero thirteen, and before I can get the motion out, the motion was being seconded by Councilmember Osborne.
She was looking at it five seconds, so.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Mayor Pullman Miles and seconded by Councilmember Osborne that we participate in the program. Is there any, um, discussion on the motion?
None.
Hearing none with the council, please vote.
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, item number thirteen is councilmember... Okay, item number thirteen is council members' report. We're going to ask, let me do this report. Let me ask the, um, the, the, the city clerk in a, what we call a, a rare cameo to, um, to give a report. Um, we were kind of tied up doing some really important, um, not that that's not important, uh, business as, as a council, but she stood in, uh, for us and for herself as well at a very important event. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I attended the annual Landale Easter egg hunt, and I just want to say, the Park and Recreation Committee and Community Services once again did a fabulous job. There were eight thousand eggs that were cleaned up in about two minutes flat, and the kids just all had a great time, and the parents were thrilled to watch their children. So, I attended that on your behalf.
Okay, thank you. No one was injured or, um.
What was the change, Rhonda? What was the?
No bunnies were injured.
No bunnies were injured, huh?
What was the change, Rhonda? What was the, what was the change that they did this time?
No whistle.
This year, after last year's incident where a whistle was blown and the kids took off ahead of time, this year they played with a stop sign, and they did stop and go with the stop sign, and it worked out fabulously.
So no Sooners? No, no Sooners this year like, like last year, it's okay. Very, very good. Okay, so let's, um, continue with the mayor and council, um, reports of anything you would like to share, any meetings or anything of that nature. Councilmember?
Well, I think that Robert and the rest of the council attended the metro tour. It was to enlighten us about the metro coming through Landale, trying to come through Landale. And they took it to South Pasadena. Pasadena showed us what it looked like. I think this is Bernard's first one, so we gave her a heads up on what they're trying to do. And, uh, we did have lunch, boxed lunch. It was delicious.
Yeah.
And I want to remind staff and the council that the twelfth of April is Youth and Government Day. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I did attend the, uh, metro tour of the Gold Line. Uh, in addition, last Wednesday, I was able to attend a luncheon hosted by SoCal Gas. I was able to, um, be introduced to the CEO Patty Wagner and the president Brett Lane, and it was kind of a nice, um, uh, enlightening luncheon where they talked a little bit about, uh, greenhouse gas emissions and how Southern California gas, it's, is very important, especially for lower-income communities, and, uh, to keep in mind when trying to convert to all-electric, some of the impacts it has on local businesses. Uh, also talked about a renewable gas, so very interesting. I was glad to be a part of that discussion and, uh, also get to meet the representatives from them, so, um, and that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I did the metro tour, although on a, a couple of days before you guys did, uh, and very interesting. Uh, you know, I, I would encourage Landale residents who live in that region, or the, the train proposal is coming through, to keep their eyes and ears open, and, um, there's an upcoming meeting. Steve, what is the date for that? Can you give it?
Please, uh, April seventeenth at Losinger High School Auditorium.
So there's more information to be had for those people that couldn't make the tour.
And that's on our website also.
Right. The thing I took away from it was, you know, um, if it's under the, the verbal portion of what they presented, it looks like it's going to be a partial below-grade or trench, as they called it. And on this tour, they took us to a number of locations where the trench was in place, and there's varying levels to that trench and varying amenities, be they sound walls, vegetation, landscape, all sorts of variables in addition to that trench, so nothing's concrete yet as far as what is coming, uh, through our city at some point in time. And then to reiterate, uh, the coffee with a cop, I'll just repeat that. What was the date again on that?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, thank you. And, uh, Frank, is it okay if I, uh, say, uh, fond farewell to our Public Works Director, just, uh, kudos to, uh, the efforts and job that you performed for the city, and much appreciated, and, um, onto greener, literally greener pastures in, in the northern, uh, portion of the state. So I want to wish you well and thank you for service you provided the city.
Thank you. It's, it's been an honor and a privilege working for, for you and the council and the community. Um, special thanks for City Manager Steve to, for the hiring and opportunity, and it's been a real experience, uh, working here and, um, and working with my colleagues. I want to thank them all for, for being there for me. Thank you.
You know, I know they're going to miss you, particularly at the Christmas party, since you were such an expert at the, uh, the games that they were playing, that Mr. Louie was hosting. Very good at trades. Anyway, best of luck to you, Frank. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Tim Reed.
Good deal, yeah. So, sorry, I missed you guys on the last meeting, but, uh, Murphy's weather got a hold of me and I was under the ground. Um, I did attend, uh, one fifty-second Street Neighborhood Watch, where we gotten together over some local issues with the sheriffs and talked about things going on. Uh, this, uh, block actually has a few locations of cameras, so we've reiterated those with the sheriffs, where they're at, when they're available, et cetera, so that was good. Also had, uh, interest of, uh, new neighborhood watch that wants to get set up over in the one sixty-sixth area, so Lieutenant and I talked briefly about that, and they're looking to find somebody to connect up and, uh, and set up a new watch there. Um, also attended the PTA honor, the PTA dinner not too very long ago, and then of course this metro tour that we were just, just on, so nice to see some of the ideas that they have, but like to see what they're really going to bring us when it comes to there. And, uh, we added ourselves and thirty-one additional South Bay residents, some from Torrance, some from Landale. So it was, all in all, it was informative for those that were able to attend. If you get a chance to hear another one, take a, take a look and listen. Been busy. And of course, I've got all these things coming up this next week that we've talked about, so everyone have a good time, make these events, and we'll be having a good time for the next round.
All right, thank you, sir. So I, I too attended the, um, the metro, um, Gold Line, um, tour. Um, that was like, what, was like a five-hour, I think, excursion, um, for five hours, um, but we did learn, um, learn a, a lot. Um, one of the things that we, we had an opportunity to speak to with, um, one resident, um, that lived, um, close to the, um. No, 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 this is the resident that lived in, um, in Pasadena, that, that lived right next to the, the railroad tracks, to kind of get his view of, um, of, his take on the, the light rail. He shared some insight, um, with us in terms of the sound wall and things that they could improve, then. And, um, he was really appreciative of the, the sound wall. Um, he said that, you know, you hear the sound, and you, but at some point, you get used to it more than anything else, but without the sound wall, you would, it would be impossible to have a conversation. But he was, um, was pretty enlightening to, to share some of his insights. He would just happen to be out there doing his gardening, um, when we, uh, um, visited, so I appreciate, um, I'm speaking with him about, um, his experience. Um, I wanted to just say that, um, as far as metro is concerned, uh, to make sure that we reiterate, um, you know, our position, uh, as a city and, and to really to, to also, um, give kudos to our, our staff, um, for these, the years that we've been in the, in the fight, and it has been a fight, um, with metro. Um, we are the little city that roar. We are that, that mouse that roar like a lion when they did not expect it and thought that they could just, you know, decide, you know, whatever they want to do, who's coming through Landale, and what could Landale do, do about it. Um, but, but the resident's voice has been heard, this council has been heard for, over the last couple of years, and our staff has really have done a, a bang-up job in making sure that they communicate, um, our, our message. So when you talk about the trench, uh, being part of the, of the design, um, if in fact that, you know, um, is the, the final design, sound wall with the new, so-called new technology, um, the sound wall, these are things that we insisted on being part of the discussion and, and that our, um, staff has made sure that this was communicated, um, that it's part of the discussion. You know, I, I, you know, I think at, at the end of the day, most people, at least that I've spoken with, not necessarily in favor of a train, and if we had our choice, we would say no train, um, um, at all, and I think that's still the position of this city. But seeing that metro, of course, is an independent, um, agency and they own the right of way, and they have, um, tremendous authority and, uh, and power that's given to them by, um, the legislator who, who created them, um, it's one of those entities that were, well, you kind of have to work with as much as you, you, you stand your ground and don't, you know, let them push you around, but at the same time, know that they have independent, um, uh, powers and authorities, sometimes even beyond what the city, um, control, um, but we won't hesitate to continue to make sure that all the mitigation measures are, are employed, even if that means we have to do whatever we have to do. I, I hate to use some nasty words that, um, no public agency like to hear. You probably can, can understand what those words would, would be, but, you know, we wouldn't, um, someone say litigation. I didn't say litigation, but someone said litigation, but we would do what we have to do to protect, um, our, our residents and our interests here in the city of Landale. With that being said, um, I do have to say they did put together a, a nice, um, presentation, um, for us, and it gave us a pretty good, um, view of how things are going in, um, South Pasadena and Pasadena on, on the Gold Line. Um, so we'll look to hear more from them. Um, everyone be reminded of the, the meeting April seventeenth, and if you can't make the meeting, you can always, of course, your members of the, the, the board of, well, the Board of Metro, of course, is, in, in this area, would be Mayor Butts, um, from the city of, um, from Inglewood, they need to hear from you. And then Mark Really Thomas, of course, the supervisors, Mark Really Thomas and, um, Janice Hahn as well, our supervisors, are members of the Metro Board, for those who are not that familiar with who the members are. Those are your point person that need to hear from you, um, even if you're not, um, able to make this meeting. Okay, with that, I want to also thank, um, Frank as well for your, your time and your service and your commitment to the small city of Landale. We appreciate all that you have done, um, um, to the Public Works Department, helping to get that department in, in shape. And you, you came in, you did what you needed to do, and you, you got the job done, and we appreciate that, sir, and we wish you Godspeed on your new endeavors. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, with that, that's all I have. Now, we have a couple of closed sessions. Um, currently, we have one, two, three, three closed sessions, but I'm going to, um, see if there's a desire from this board to have an emergency closed session on an item that, um, did not make the agenda, and because it's an emergency closed session, there's this, this long narrative that I have to read in order to make sure that we are, um, in compliance with, with the law that re- that allows you to have, um, additional items on your, your agenda. So here we go. Okay, I would like to, um, a two-thirds vote, this is going to take a two-thirds vote of, of an emergency item to be placed as an agenda item number seventeen, a new closed-door session. This item is a closed, um, session to discuss whether to initiate an unlawful detainer against, um, Arana, um, Ro- Rosa, Rosali, uh, Richard Rosalys, yeah, with respect to the housing owned by the successor agency within the Blue Bonnet Mobile Home Park located at forty-four thirty-two, uh, Manhattan Beach Boulevard, as required by the notice of termination of tenancy. Served on the family by the city's consultant, the tenancy will terminate this Thursday. The Brown Act allows discussions and actions on the items not appearing on the posted agenda where a city council determines that immediate action necessary, and the need for action comes to the attention of the city after its agenda was posted. This item is not currently on the agenda. As city staff learned of the tenant's decision not to vacate the property and their reason thereafter, the fact was given rise to the need for an urgency item from the city's consultants on Friday after this agenda was posted and the city hall was closed for the weekend. Immediate action is needed if the city wishes to move forward with the previous authorized unlawful detainer action and obtain a court order terminating the tenancy, as should the Rosales family fails to vacate the property as the successor agency has an agreement with the developer for development of the property at the issues and adjacent property, which requires the successor agency to promptly remove the tenants. So there we have it. Do I hear a motion to add this agenda as an emergency item?
So moved. I'll make a motion.
Second.
So there's been a motion, there's been a motion by Mr. Pat Kearney that we add this item number seventeen as an emergency item, and seconded by Councilwoman Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? This item, once again, is going to take a two-thirds in order to, um, to be adopted. Will the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, so the motion was approved anonymously, and so we will add item number seventeen as a closed-door session, and at this point, we will ask the city attorney to give us the provision for which we will go under closed-door session.
The city council and successor agency will meet in closed session on a combined total of four items. The first is to confer with labor negotiators as agendized as item J fourteen. The second is to discuss a matter in which the city has significant exposure to litigation in one case, as agendized as J fifteen, and then J sixteen and J seventeen are both matters in which the city will consider whether to, and successor agency will consider whether to initiate litigation. So there's a total of two cases now instead of one. Thank you.
Okay, so we're still in recess. We have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
The city council met in closed session on four items. On the first three, the council was updated. No reportable action. On the fourth item, the one that was added by the council tonight as an extra item, the council unanimously reaffirmed its desire to move forward with the unlawful detainer action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Okay, tonight, we're going to close this, adjourn this meeting in the memory of Al White. He's a long-term, um, resident of Landale and he graduated, uh, Losinger High School in nineteen, yeah, nineteen seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, right.
He passed away la- last week.
Yeah, he'd been ill for some time. I knew Al at school and, uh.
And we are.
We'd see him around town in his wheelchair and, uh, but, uh, nice guy, really nice guy. I'd see him with the dog in his lap, riding around in his, uh, electric chair, and he lived over on Avis by Will Rogers, but sadly, uh, passed. Leaves a, behind a daughter, grown adult daughter.
Okay, sorry to hear of his passing, and we will adjourn in his honor tonight. With that, um, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, April the sixteenth. I got two years here, in the city of Landale, um, city hall chambers. It is now eight thirty-five. This meeting is adjourned.